All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the continuation of the September meeting of the RTM. My name is Tom Burn, RTM moderator. We will start again with Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone would join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
America.
One nation. You know, I invited our guests last night to lead us in the pledge and I learned something new. Apparently, members of the military do not recite the pledge. They stand silent. All right. So tonight, we have remaining three items and District elevens since the meeting resolution. And we will take them in numerical order, eight, nine, and sixteen. So item eight comes before us on a first read. I believe this was brought to us by the Selectments Committee chaired by Michael Basham. Mr. Basham, would you like to present this?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I would. Thank you. Resolved that sections nine dash one and nine dash five of chapter nine comma waste and litter comma article one waste collection and disposable of the code of ordinances of town of Greenwich are amended as follows. It is as it appears on the call.
Thank you. Will member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item eight has been moved and seconded. We will now hear the reports of this. Mr. Basham, do you have a report of the special committee?
No, Mr. Moderator, I have a report of the Finance Committee.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you. As co-chair of the First Selectman's Waste Management Committee, I presented the item to the Finance Committee at our September twentieth meeting. I explained that in the attached explanatory to the call, there's a copy of the recommendations. The West Committee, the Waste Committee presented to the First Selectmen for consideration. I mentioned that the committee had agreed on five recommendations. We could not reach a consensus on three items, so these were presented as options for consideration. What is being presented for the first read are proposed ordinance changes that incorporate most of the recommendations the full committee agreed on and that were developed with input from the Department of Public Works Commissioner and her staff. These were approved by a two to one vote of the Board of Selectmen, which consists of the select men, the select woman, and select person. I presented a quick summary of the proposed changes. They are as follows. The June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two sunset clause is being eliminated. The town sold seven thousand seven hundred and forty permits last fiscal year far exceeding the twenty-five hundred dollars, the twenty-five thousand, twenty-five hundred, forgive the estimate. And it is sold almost seventy-seven hundred so far this year. This was attributed to the low cost of the permit. A ten dollar entry fee is being proposed for cars without a permit. I explained that this is being proposed as an incentive to purchase, for those to purchase a permit and primarily due to the lack of space in Holly Hill's current traffic configuration for cars and other vehicles without a permit to turn around and exit the facility. A fee schedule is proposed for disposing of miscellaneous items brought to Holly Hill. I noted that there's already a fee schedule presented on the DPW website. However, with the exception of the hundred and twelve dollar tipping fee that is at the top of that schedule, currently, the commissioner actually has no authority to collect these fees. Certain vehicles will now be required to go over the scale at Holly Hill and pay the same tipping fee as license holders. This is intended to capture the disposal cost arising from permit holders bringing in large loads of material in excess of fifty pounds per visit. Since the disposal of all material brought to Holly Hill comes at a cost to the town, these proposed changes are intended to cover most of that cost. Finally, a recent external audit of Holly Hill noted the need for improved enforcement of permit fees and other fees. As a result, language was included authorizing the commissioner to administer and enforce the ordinance. I also noted that the that any of the fees proposed by the commissioner would need to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. Committee members asked about the estimated cost for providing the enhanced enforcement, but no specific numbers were available. I mentioned that I expected the commissioner to include cost for enforcement in her FY twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget presented by the First Selectmen to the BET in early January. A motion was made, seconded, and unanimously approved to remove the last sentence in paragraph four of section nine point dash five. The committee thought that the language was inconsistent with language in the third paragraph. It should be removed. I will make this motion at the appropriate time. Committee voted ten zero two to approve the item as amended. District seven and eight abstained because they would have preferred more supporting financial data. Thank you.
Thank you. Kip Bergweger with the report of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Legislative and Rules met last Monday. We were helped by Amy Seibert, the Commissioner of the DPW, and Scott Calhoun, who is the Secretary of the First Selectman's Waste Management Committee. The proposed amendments to the ordinance that set forth this item are made on unanimous recommendation of the First Selectman's Waste Management Committee. They are intended to address loopholes in the current ordinance that set forth in the item. These loopholes are created by residents who opt not to purchase yearly permits but seek access to the Holly Hill facility for dumping purposes, charging such residents a ten dollar dumping fee per visit. Also, residents were overloading passenger vehicles to dump waste at the facility. The ordinance will be amended to incorporate the fee schedules posted on the DPW's website for dumping certain bulk trash items such as appliances and tires. Scott Calhoun also discussed a two-part proposal, which was recommended by a smaller group of members of the the committee, that the ordinance be amended to exempt seniors from sixty-five years and older from the permit fee requirement and impose a bag fee on residents who do not use a trash hauling service, which would include a tipping fee and directly drop their solid waste in Holly Hill. The intent of this proposal was to change. And it was a call to close the cost gap created by this direct trash drop off, which is approximated to be fifteen to seventeen percent of the total trash produced by the town. Scott Calhoun noted that a minority of town residents had directly dumped off five thousand seven hundred and eighty tons of trash, trash in Holly Hill last year while paying only twenty-five dollars per year and costing the town over five hundred thousand dollars. The bag fee is aimed specifically at those individuals taking advantage of the low permit fee to drop off excessive tons of trash. We had several members of our committee taking objections to the item. Kathy Whitaker noted that permit fees had generated three times as much revenue as expected. It was never the objective of the ordinance to cover all waste costs in Holly Hill. And residents have the right to stuff their vehicles with trash and bring it to Holly Hill if they so choose. She further noted that language around enforcement, these schedules, and definition of vehicles to be weighed was too vague. Katie Hines noted that most people have hired haulers. The town is not losing that much money. I'll be adding the need for additional fees. And the definition of vehicles to be weighed should be reflected in the ordinance. Now, Lewis defined that the ordinance was too ambiguous as fees for previously excluded items like recyclables and places too much discretion in the Department of Public Works hands. In response, Amy Seibert noted that as a part of normal operations at Holly Hill, the Department of Public Works already defines vehicles to be weighed. That's a fee schedule for select items to be weighed or discarded at Holly Hill and post the information on the town website. However, as fee schedules and definitions evolve over time, she noted it is better not to include such details in the ordinance, but rather authorize them in general terms. Brian Rainey objected to the ten dollar fee for his visitors to Holly Hill that have no permit. Amy mentioned that this had been recommended by the auditors as a control to provide access to occasional visitors who may have no need to purchase a permit. Scott Calhoun made a motion to amend section nine dash five by adding a paragraph, a sentence at the end, paragraph three stating senior town residents aged sixty-five plus will not be subject to the permit fee. On a motion, on a vote, on this motion to amend passed four, six, four, one. District three absent, this six, one, five, six, and ten voted no, believing the account for the seniors was not necessary. I'll make a move for that motion, make a motion for that amendment at this proper time. Scott Calhoun also made a motion to amend section nine dash five to who wish to dispose of municipal solid waste to use a town authorized bag purchased at a definite cost. Jean Weissbacher noted that the intention behind this motion is good and would solve a clear problem and cost gap created by residents directly dumping their bulk waste. But her vote would be to abstain due to the fact the RTM recently voted down a proposed bag ordinance. A vote on this motion to amend failed, two, eight, one, District three absent. District nine abstained for the reasons stated. Brian Rainey then made a motion to amend section nine dash five, changing the last sentences of paragraph six and seven to swap the words commissioner for Board of Selectmen and Board of Selectmen for Commissioner. Again, I'll make move to adopt that at the appropriate time. A vote on item eight is amended on legal order, as state two to one, District three absent. District one abstained, District two and five voted no. A vote on the item as amended on the merits passed eight, three, zero. The voters, District one, two, and five voting no, believe that the proposed changes to the waste and literal ordinance were not necessary, and the ordinance should be left as it is.
Thank you. Michael Spilo, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Our committee discussed item eight at length. We heard from Commissioner Seibert. Generally, without reiterating too much of what was said before, we approved of the proposed changes, but several members expressed expressed concern over the redundant potential potentially conflicting language regarding the Board of Selectmen and Commissioner setting fees. Some members felt we don't want to hamper operations by requiring the RTM to approve changes to fees as spelled out in the ordinance. Others preferred the RTM have such approval. Overall, all agreed that the language could be tightened. There was no objection to the removal of the sunset clause. The vote was three, nine, zero. However, those voting no were in favor of the item and want to see the language tightened.
Thank you. Mr. Bergweger? You are going to offer a motion to amend?
Yes. It was moved and seconded to amend section nine dash five by adding to the end of paragraph three the following sentence. Senior town residents age sixty-five plus will not be subject to the permit fee.
Thank you. That being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. Discussion on the Legislative and Rules motion to amend item eight. We do have a sign up list. Scott Calhoun to be followed by Cheryl Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, members of the RTM for this opportunity. I am in District seven, the RTM. I'm also Secretary of the First Selectman's Waste Management Committee, working alongside Mike Basham Chair and Dan Ozesmir, who was also on the committee. I'm proud of the work we did on the committee. It was a bipartisan effort. And I think we were able to accomplish a great deal. Not everything that we recommended came through, but I think the motions in here are fair. In terms of this amendment in particular, with other it's not me.
Bergweger, could you mute your? We're hearing some noise. What? All right. I'm sorry, Mr. Calhoun. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So look, the giving a, you know, making sure that seniors don't have to pay the permit fee, I think, is consistent with town policy in other areas. For example, beach passes, park passes. It will not have an overly negative impact on our budget. The town sold about seven thousand seven hundred permits last year. This year, so far, about the same number. We estimate that about fifteen percent of these permits were to senior town residents. That would amount to about thirty thousand dollars of revenue. We think that's a reasonable discount in terms of overall revenues. Regarding the rest of the items here, I just want to say that I think that they're very helpful. I think that the the language actually is is well stated. The ten dollar visitor fee.
Mr. Calhoun, we are just discussing the pending motion to exempt those sixty-five and over from
Thank you. Okay, so let me just say, I'll wrap up and just say that I think this is fair. The impact is not is not great on our budget. I think it's consistent with town policy, and I recommend that you vote in favor of exempting seniors, senior town residents from paying the permit fee. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, before I call on Cheryl Moss, I neglected Mr. Ozesmir. The BOC took this up. Is that correct?
That is correct, Tom.
All right, you want to give a report on that?
Correct. Thank you. I will. Obviously, there's been some good reports already. I'll try to focus on items not mentioned. At the beginning of the BOC discussion, and the BOC did vote unanimously to take up this item. We were reminded as to why we were reviewing this item. And we see Jan Znoa Chair indicated that in April two thousand twenty, and May two thousand twenty, we did approve the ordinance. But in the ordinance, by a vote of one fourteen to one oh nine, there was a requirement for sunset on both the tipping and the permit and the creation of this Waste Management Committee. So that's why we're here. In April of this year, the RTM decided to eliminate the sunset on the tipping by a vote of two oh five, two seven, three. So we're here to discuss the permit. I would agree with the comments made by the other committees. I would note that at the BOC, we did have some discussion about the ten dollar daily fee. There was some concern in the committee that this assumption that many people were abusing you know, direct dump off and the fact that there were single visitors causing a big problem was not proven. There was there. So we did have a motion to eliminate the ten dollar fee. That vote was four, two, six. It did pass, but with only a third of the disc of the committee. If appropriate, I will make that motion. I would note that today we did by email poll the BOC and felt that, given this was a first read, that we would like to withdraw the motion if the moderator would permit. Thank you.
That's fine. So your intent would be to present it on the second read?
Or potentially withdrawn, but that would be up to
So that's fine. Yeah. If you're if you're all in agreement on that. All right. So I'm sorry, we went back to a general report from one of our committees. Back now to the discussion on the Legislative and Rules motion to exempt those sixty-five and older from the annual permit fee. So our next speaker is Cheryl Moss, to be followed by Maria Caricella. No, Cheryl Moss? All right, why don't we? Why don't we move to Maria Caricella? If Cheryl Moss shows up before we finish, we'll go to her to be followed by Kathy Whitaker. All right, is the Ron Caricella Maria? If you could raise your hand, please, and indicate. No response? Could Maria Caricella please raise your hand so we can identify you? Nothing? Is Kathy Whitaker with us?
I am.
All right, you're up.
My points have already been covered. I was quoted by Mr. Bergweger in the Eleanor presentation, and Mr. Ozesmir covered anything else I was going to say. So I urge people to not vote for this.
Thank you. All right. Cheryl Moss, last call? No? Okay. Well, we will need to take a record vote on this. So will the district tabulators please mark your voting cards? Legislative and Rules motion to amend item eight. Number one. They there potentially is another one. I don't actually think it's going to be controversial, but this is the first Legislative and Rules motion to amend item eight and proceed to poll your delegation. We will allow the five minute period. Let's see. Pardon? What? All right. Thank you. So, yes, this, if you are in favor of taking out, well, I'm sorry, including a provision that any town resident sixty-five years of age or older shall not be required to pay the fee for the permit, you should vote yes. So if you want to exempt seniors, you vote yes. If you do not want to exempt seniors, you vote no on this amendment. This is, you know, just an amendment. We'll then come back, and there are other proposed amendments. And then ultimately, we'll vote on the merits, but not now. This is just, do you want to change it to exempt seniors from the twenty-five dollar fee? If you do, you vote yes. If you do not, you vote no. We're back? All right, thank you. All right. So that's the the end of that five minute period. We do not yet have the vote in, but we can continue. There's more work to be done on this. I will go by paragraph order where the changes are suggested. So the next one, I understand, Mr. Basham, the Finance Committee has a proposal for let's call it nine dash five, paragraph four.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. This sentence was included to make it clear that a resident entering Holly Hill by paying a ten dollar fee per visit would also be required to pay any of the other fees being proposed in the ordinance that might apply. The committee noted that similar language was not in the third paragraph applying to residents entering Holly Hill with a twenty-five dollar annual permit. Since the proposed ordinance specifies additional fees for disposal of miscellaneous items and for bulky waste, yard waste, construction debris, or scrap metal, this implies that residents are subject to, quote, other disposal fees, unquote, in addition to the permit fees. As a result, the committee voted unanimously to eliminate the redundant language in paragraph three.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Basham, I I have a question. I don't want to confuse the issue. But I thought I heard BOC wanting to take out that ten dollar fee for those who don't have a permit. What happens when someone drives up to the facility without a permit? Shouldn't they just be turned away?
Well, Mr. Moderator, you're absolutely correct. They should be turned away. One of the turned away. One of the problems is traffic configuration of Holly Hill. The ability to be able to turn people around who do not have a permit is very limited and could result in significant traffic issues. And it was recommended by the auditors, actually, that we institute a fee to avoid that issue as well as incent people to encourage and incent people to actually buy an annual permit for twenty-five dollars.
All right. Okay, so the Finance Committee motion, again, does not need to be seconded, is suggesting that we amend paragraph four by deleting that last sentence, which currently says all other disposal fees will apply as appropriate. All right, we also, so discussion on the Finance Committee motion to amend. I do have some names who signed up. Is Maria Caricella with us? No? I have Dan Ozesmir to be followed by Scott Calhoun.
Thank you. I speak on this as a member of the RTM, not as the BOC. The reason I support the finance motion is that I know there's a lot of discussion about tightening up the language. It did come out at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, their second meeting, when they did ultimately approve this, that there was a there was a potential that that wording would allow the Commissioner and the Board of Selectmen to add new fees that were not anticipated or expected. And I do agree with finance to tighten this up. So I would urge everyone to vote yes on the finance motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Calhoun. Speaking on the Finance Committee motion to delete that last sentence in paragraph four.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Scott Calhoun, D seven, Secretary of the Waste Management Committee. I would recommend voting against this motion to amend, to delete that sentence. The reason why that sentence is there is to make it clear that if a visitor comes without a permit and has to pay a ten dollar fee, that that doesn't mean that they are free from the other fees, for example, bulky waste or having dropping off a refrigerator. In other words, the ten dollar fee does not cover everything. The ten dollar fee is simply the entrance fee in place of the permit. So by having that sentence there, it makes it clear that anybody who comes in pays ten dollars if they don't have a permit, and then also must pay any other applicable fees that would apply. And if you don't have that sentence, it's possible that somebody could come in and say, well, I paid my ten dollars. I don't have to pay anything else. So that's why the sentence is there. We put it there as a group for a reason, and I would recommend that we keep it there. So I say, please vote against this amendment.
Thank you. All right. We don't, we do not yet have the final vote on that first legislative rules motion to amend. But that should be well along. So I will call for the vote on this Finance Committee motion to amend. If you are in favor of taking out that sentence that currently reads all other disposal fees will apply as appropriate. And that is for those who do not have the annual permit when they show up. If you want to take that out, that length, that sentence out, you vote yes. If you want to leave it in, you vote no. So will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Finance Committee motion to amend item eight and proceed to poll your delegation. All right, we do. We just did get the result on the Legislative and Rules Committee. This was to include a provision exempting seniors from paying the annual fee. Those in favor, one hundred opposed, fifty-eight abstaining, zero. That item is carried. And by the way, I think I said we would take a vote on the merits tonight. This is a first read, so that we are not going to do that absent some special vote, which I don't anticipate. So currently, what is before us, you know, we are in the process of voting on the Finance Committee motion to delete that sentence. Thank you. All right. All right, the vote is still in progress, so we can continue at this point. Mr. Bergweger, I understand your committee had one final proposed change, which was just flipping Board of Selectmen and Commissioner. Is that right?
That's correct.
All right. And so so you are proposing to amend paragraph. Now, I thought I heard you say six and seven. It looks to me like it's five and six.
It's actually five and six. I miscounted.
That's okay. All right. And so what you're what you're saying is it will be the Board of Selectmen that's that sets a fee after consultation and approval by the Commissioner?
Yes.
All right.
That's that last sentence in each paragraph.
Okay. Any anything further you want to say on that?
No.
All right. Is there any objection? We can adopt a motion by unanimous consent. Is there any objection to making that change? This is in paragraphs five and six of section nine dash five to flip Commissioner, the roles of the Commissioner and Board of Selectmen regarding setting the fee. Is there any objection to that? Hearing none. That motion may be adopted upon unanimous consent. All right. So we are not taking a final vote on this tonight. And if BOC is going to offer their motion, you know, we'll find out in October. And if B O C is going to offer their motion, you know, we'll find out in October. So we now, all right. I guess there was a sign up list for general comments on this. All right. So we can hear those. If anyone would like to offer them now, just understanding, we're not going to vote. On the merits tonight. We still, I recognize we still don't have the result of the vote. On the finance committee motion, and I will report that as soon as I have it. So I will go through. We have a list of six speakers. If anyone cares to offer general comments on this item, now is the time. So Julie Deschamps to be followed by Michael Spilo. No Julie. All right. So Michael Spilo to be followed by Brian Rainey.
I have nothing at this time.
Brian Rainey to be followed by Scott Cal.
As we're not taking a vote tonight. No, thank you.
All right. Scott Cal been followed by Cheryl Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm going to make a few brief comments here. I'd just like to explain the reason for some of this language. And why I think it's important for us to be including this in this ordinance. We have some language in here besides the $10 fee, which was recommended by the auditor. We have some language in here, which recommends that the, the commissioner. It should be allowed to, in consultation with the. Board of Selectmen. To define a passenger vehicle or a non-passenger vehicle and set rates for bulky waste. In practice, this is already done and those, those fees and definitions are posted on the website. But without having it mentioned in the ordinance or referenced here. The commissioner actually doesn't have authority. And that means that there could be some potential problems with security or enforcement. So in order to be able to operate flexibly and while ensuring safety and enforcement, it's good to reference these things in the ordinance. This was also again, part of the general recommendations. We don't want to have specific language in the ordinance because these things evolve. The problem, you know, fees can change depending on the cost to the town for bulky waste. The problem that the, the commissioner has been facing is that. While all commercial vehicles that bring in bulky waste sort of construction debris or other things yard waste. All commercial vehicles must be weighed. Passenger vehicles don't have to get weighed. But some people have actually been taking advantage of that. And converting their passenger vehicles into cargo vehicles. Taking out the seats, making them into really cargo vessels and then thereby bringing in. Hundreds or I don't know, a thousand pounds of, of construction debris and avoiding any fees. So this is really just to tighten up a loophole so that the commissioner can. Be flexible about defining those passenger vehicles. And also the rates that should be charged for dropping off. Depending upon what it costs the town. And note that the first 50 pounds are free in terms of going over the scale. So it's only the, from the second 50 pounds onwards. That's it, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to make that explanation. So I hope you'll be supportive. Of these suggested amendments, which will help. Run a smooth process at Holly Hill.
Thank you. You, you were talking in terms of how your committee presented it to us. I just want to point out. We did flip the role of the commissioner and the board of selectmen on what you were just describing. So it's. Ultimately, the board of selectmen that will do setting the fees and defining the vehicles and all that with consultation approval of the commissioner. All right. Is Cheryl Moss with us? No? Kathy Whitaker, general comments?
Oh, no, sorry. Pass.
Okay. I do have the result on the finance committee motion, and that was to take out the last sentence in paragraph four. Those in favor, 41 opposed, 118 abstaining zero. That motion has failed. All right. So that, that. Is all we will do tonight on item eight. This will be back to us in October. In the form that we adopted tonight. On the October call. The next item is item nine. Do we have the? Chairman of the Board of Education, Peter Bernstein with us.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you for holding a meeting on my son's birthday. He is absolutely thrilled to be here with you tonight. Item number nine, resolved that the R T M approves the grant of an easement from the town of Greenwich to Connecticut Light and Power Company doing business as EverSource Energy. For the property located at 10 Hillside Road for the purpose of providing upgraded electric service for the reconstructed Cardinal Stadium located at 10 Hillside Road. Be it further resolved that the first selectman is hereby authorized to execute such easement on behalf of the town of Greenwich. The item is as, is as it appears in the call, although I understand legislative and rules has a substitute motion for you.
Mr. Bernstein, I assure you, whatever the depth of emotional feelings your son has, mine are that exponentially. All right. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution on item nine? The rest, thank you. Resolution on item nine has been moved and seconded. All right. So. We have Ms. Freitag, the Vice Chair of Education with the report of that committee. Is that right? We are looking for Jennifer Freitag.
Hello. Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, everyone. Your education committee met on Monday, September 20th via Zoom, and we took up item nine that evening. As Mr. Bernstein stated, item nine is an easement to allow EverSource to provide electrical service to Cardinal Stadium at Greenwich High School. The new bathrooms, team room, and bleachers need an increased electrical service. Which requires EverSource to install a transformer for the exclusive use of the stadium. The easement is a new requirement for EverSource to install upgraded equipment. The town approved an identical easement for the police pistol range in March. The easement will run along the property abutting the post road in front of Cardinal Stadium. Peter Bernstein, Chair of the Board of Education, presented this item to us with Dan Watson, the Board of Education's Director of Facilities. At the time of the presentation, the form of the easement and the map showing the location of the easement had not been posted to the town website. Therefore, we did not have an opportunity to read the details of the easement or see the exact location. Mr. Bernstein and Mr. Watson explained that this was a standard form required by EverSource. We asked whether they had discussed limiting EverSource's ability to come onto the property to service the equipment during school hours. They said they had not considered it. Members of the committee pointed out that this could be disruptive or present security concerns, which is why schools typically will not allow construction work during school hours. Mr. Bernstein explained that time was of the essence for this easement. Without it, EverSource will not complete the electrical work and Cardinal Stadium will not be able to open for home games for this year's football season. With the assumption that this easement was pro forma and acceptable to the Board of Education, we voted to approve this item 12-0-0. Some members, however, expressed concern that EverSource could have unfettered access to the site. But did not want to hold up construction if the Board of Education did not feel these concerns were significant. After our meeting, members of the committee had an opportunity to read the actual easement proposed by EverSource. Over email, several members of the committee expressed concern about some of the provisions in the easement. And the limits they place on the town's use of the property and the rights they grant to EverSource for unfettered access. We were notified that the Legislative and Rules Committee was working with town lawyers to address these issues. And understand that they have a substitute resolution proposed to amendments to offer this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bergweger with the Legislative and Rules Report.
Well, we met again on last Monday. We were helped by Christina Downey and Joe Kelly of the Board of Education. The issue, the easement issue permits EverSource to install underground wires and a transformer for electrical service at the new Cardinal Stadium. We just, some of our members have just had general questions because we had, had not yet had access to. Either the language of the easement or the map showing the location of the easement. One member wanted to know if the easement would be transferable if the town transferred providers. The Board of Ed was unsure, but suggested that the easement would expire. And we'd get a new one for another service provider. Another member of the committee asked if there would be substantial delays to the stadium project. It took time to renegotiate the terms of easement. Joe Kelly explained that there may not be a lot of leeway in how the easement can be worded. He further noted there was time pressure and as. Jennifer Freitag noted. This. The power cannot be installed without the easement. That would delay the certificate of occupancy. Open the statement. Graveyard. We, we decided since we did not have, and we had only had, some of our members received a copy of the easement at the last minute. And had concerns about the, as it was currently written, seemed to grant EverSource. The easement in perpetuity. And restricted some restrictions on the town's land in question. So we. Moved to have a second meeting, special meeting. On either Wednesday or Thursday of the, of that week, because we were wanted to have Monsieur. Thomas Higney, who was the counsel for the Board of Ed. Available to advise us. It turned out he was available on Thursday, so we met that day. We learned that. The easement. Was 30 feet wide at some places and wider at other points. It ran right along the border with. Putnam Avenue. There was a 27 foot setback from the avenue so that. The town could not use 27 feet of that space, even if, even if it didn't have, even if it is more. EverSource didn't have an easement. There were other restrictions. So basically, our. Committee. Marked up the. Easement as we'd seen it. Tom Higney agreed to speak with EverSource on the following day on, on the things that we were seeking. It can, then we can then got back a revised draft from EverSource. As, as noted before. This was supposed to be similar to the easement for the pistol range, which was also an underground easement. And we were able to get. The provisions from the easement, the prior easement that we had sought into the Cardinal Stadium easement. Although. We did have one item that. Was in the prior easement that we expected to have it. But we didn't, well, I shouldn't say we expected to have it. We were expecting all the changes that we requested that were consistent. With the pistol range to be adopted. And all but one. Was, and I think it was only because it wasn't pointed out to EverSource. We then had another series of meeting and with some more changes. In the easement agreement. Then. Because we had a delay. Yesterday evening, we distributed copies of the document. And the map, I should mention that the easement map. Shows a number of items and other structures that are present, including the. Shot put area, a transformer. And generator that the town will have there. So we arranged to have the easement map revised to show all the structures that the town intends to put. In the easement. We were also advised that the easement was all concrete or mostly all concrete, maybe some shrubbery. And it was expected that food trucks would be parked there during the football games. So it would be used for temporary parking, but it wouldn't be for permanent parking. So we went through all of these permutations and eventually. Marked up the easement and the, and. Reviewed and accepted the easement map, the committee did, I should say. And then. We realized that the resolution as written. Says that the first selectman is authorized to execute such easement. But the such easement was the one that no, that came out right on the. Monday, late Monday. And the one we're going to be executing now. Was not that easement. So we made the same amendment to the. Resolution that was made for the. Pistol range easement, which is to say will read exactly. As the same. Except that the. The last. End of the second sentence. It will be adding words. And if I can find the. Substantially similar form as presented to the R T M. Which means. It's not exactly the same, but, but substantially what we've been looking at. Now, the one thing I mentioned that there was another item that we had. Received at the pistol range. Which wasn't in this. And our, I think we wanted, we want to propose that this. Easement be adopted in the, in the modified form that we proposed. But we would propose to. Ask. Ask. EverSource if they would make the same change that they had already agreed to make to, for the. Pistol range. And since I'm presenting that now, so that the R T M has been presented with that notion. And the first selectman could sign either form. If we get the additional language, it would be covered by the. Substituted resolution.
Are you going to be? That is? This is the Grantor's land?
Yes, there's the land, the land in the, in the form of a set. Has a couple of references to the Grantor's land and we're not, but that. Have taken literally could, I mean, every square foot in town. And we want to change that to the easement area.
All right.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
That way, some of these things that. That. EverSource is allowed to do such as cutting down trees that are in the way the. Wires and such would not apply across the entire school district.
All right. So I understand, you know, the one issue here is. The easement itself is not part of our record right now. And you have. Negotiated, I, I take it substantial. Number of changes. How do we make this a part of our record? So that we know what the form of easement agreement is.
Well, first of all, we've sent it to everyone, everyone in, in the R T M via. The district and standing committee chairs. And secondly, I can read to you the exact language that was changed.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a lot and everyone has received it. As you said, I'm just saying for our records and meaning our minutes.
Well, I have forwarded the, the actual documents. The redlined versions. To.
We need to make it part of our minutes, don't we?
Yes. Okay. I guess that's what we should do.
All right. I, I will ask. Mr. Jones, you have the ability to pull that easement up with the redline version? Mr. Bergweger, we're gonna, we're gonna try and put this on the screen. And if you could just verify that this is the document. That your committee worked on, you know, maybe. That will work. That's page one is a summary. This page two is the, and page three of the. Redline version. All right. So yeah, I mean, just go slow. Let, let's have Mr. Bergweger just verify.
There was some of the. Let's see, the.
Can you continue to spell? Can you continue to spell?
The last, the next to the last paragraph on this first page, there is some additional language that goes at the end of that. Located where it says, actually, the last paragraph, last sentence on the page, and then it goes over, carryover. Oh, no, that's, I was looking at the wrong one, that's, that's, that's covered. So yes, this is it.
Okay. All right, could, now, just going back to the resolution, you said in substantially similar forms presented to the RTM. Can we add, you know, as exhibited to the RTM at its meeting on September twenty eight?
Absolutely.
And, and then we would just attach that to our minutes.
Yes, okay.
All right. So that, that is a motion on behalf of the committee, well, you know, I just suggest some additional language, but would you like to make that motion? And I guess your committee didn't take up that exact language.
Yes, if you'll just give me the additional language you suggested.
Did I just say?
Exactly similar forms presented to the RTM.
In, in, in similar form is presented to the RTM as exhibited to the RTM at its meeting on September twenty eighth.
As exhibited.
And attached here to, and attached to the minutes of the meeting.
At its meeting on September twenty eight and attached to the minutes of this meeting, of that meeting. So I would, I move to substitute a, a resolution which reads exactly as the existing resolution and then following the end, we had comma in substantially similar form as presented to the RTM. As exhibited to the RTM at its meeting on September twenty eighth, comma twenty twenty one. And attached to the minutes of that meeting.
All right, so that is a motion to amend item nine, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to add that language referring to the actual easement as amended and worked up by Legislative and Rules Committee to item nine. We can adopt that motion upon unanimous consent. Is there any objection to adding that language? All right, we, we see no objection, so that motion may be adopted upon unanimous consent. We we do, oh, I'm sorry, so that was, that was just the legislative, all right, I forgot where we were, I'm sorry. We, we have not yet gotten the other reports of the committee, so we've taken, we've already taken up Eleanor's motion to amend. We will now get the report of the Public Works Committee, Michael Spilo, Chairman of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Board of Ed member Kelly presented the need for the easement. I won't bore you with the specifics again. Mr. Kelly presented easement as being substantially similar to the easement required for the police pistol range. The committee did not discuss any specific terms of the easement, but, and voted twelve zero zero.
Thank you. Kimberly Salee, Chair of our Transportation Committee.
At Tuesday night's Transportation Committee Zoom meeting, Joe Kelly and Peter Bernstein of the BOE were present to explain and reassure us that the easement was to help to allow for the completion of the high school stadium. They were there to answer questions, but there wasn't much discussion on the size or necessity of the easement. The vote was ten yes, zero no, zero abstaining and two absent. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, were there any other committees taking this up? All right, as I said, there there's one, one name, before I get to that, I do want to thank Mr. Bergweger and his committee for all of the work that was done on this. I, I think everyone should know, there has, there, there were requests made, not official requests from the Board of Ed, but a number of people from the football community wanted us to hold a special meeting two weeks ago. And, you know, I thought, I responded that we have a organized system for vetting items that come to us. And we have to have our committees meet, our districts meet, and this is, you know, just a wonderful job, I think. Your committee has done the RTM proud and I thank you, Mr. Bergweger, for leading it. And all the members on your committee for protecting the town's interest in this regard, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and give a lot of credit to the members of the committee.
Yes, okay. All right, discussion on item nine, all I have is Brian Rainey. Mr. Rainey?
Hey, Mr. Moderator, I was originally opposed to this, I'm on L and R, and when you say that the, the members of the committee have done a, a service to, to the RTM, that's an understatement. They have been working furiously all weekend and over the last two days to make these changes to the easement. And to get ever source to agree to them, absolutely, I'm now one hundred percent in favor of easement as changed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number nine as amended and proceed to pull your delegation? Yeah, right, if you were in favor of the easement, you vote yes. If you are opposed to the easement, you vote no. All right, that vote is still in progress, but we will continue. The next item is item sixteen. This is the GOSA contract, this is the bargaining unit for the public school administrators. Mr. Bernstein with that resolution, I believe.
Yes, Miss Moderator, thank you, and thank you for adding this at the last moment. Resolve that the representative town meeting of the Town of Greenwich hereby approves the agreement between the Board of Education and the Greenwich Education Organization of School Administrators, representing administrators for period July one, twenty twenty two to June thirty twenty twenty five. The item is as it appears in the call, the labor contracts as a substitute resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, and please extend our apologies to your son and we all wish him a very happy birthday, of course.
I will let him know, thank you.
All right. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? You're supposed to say so moved, second. Thank you. Resolution on item sixteen has been moved and seconded. We will now hear the reports of the committees that considered this. Mr. Ozesmere with the Budget Overview Committee Report.
Yes, I thank, thank you, Peter, and thank you, Tom. Before presenting the report, the, we would like the LCC voted seven zero to amend the resolution. In the first resolved sentence, we replace the word approves with rejects.
Okay, so what, what we normally do is we get the reports and then I'll come back and take up your, your motion. So you, you are now, I, I actually was going in alphabetical order, but you, you want to give the both for labor contracts and budget overview?
Okay, your Labor Contracts Committee met on September fourteenth at six P M. We had seven of nine in attendance. Maria Hamry, who's an alternate, acted as a voting delegate for the meeting. The Labor Contracts Committee reviewed what is now item sixteen, as the contract for the Greenwich Organization of School Administrators or GOSA. The contract was presented to the committee by Peter Bernstein, Board of Ed Chair Joe Kelly, who's the Chair of the Board of Ed Negotiating Committee, and Christina Downey, who's a member of the Board of Education Negotiating Committee. The town labor negotiator, Mike Mason, also attended. The following are the key summaries of the elements of the contract. Contract covers fifty five school administrators, which includes the principals of the, and assistant principals of the high school, three middle schools, eleven mil, eleven elementary schools and program coordinators, program administrators and house heads at the high school. The contract is for three years, from July one, two thousand twenty two to June thirty, two thousand twenty five. The total cost, cost of a contract is thirty four million dollars. It's important to note that due to state statute, negotiations for school contracts have a very tight timeframe. The negotiation started in June two thousand twenty one and an agreement was reached at the end of August of two thousand twenty one. GOSA ratified the contract on September second of this year, the Board of Ed approved it a week later on September ninth. In terms of specifics, the town provided an additional equity pay increase for the eleven elementary school assistant principals. The increase was seven hundred fifty dollars per year over three years, which means at the end of the contract, those eleven employees received a salary two thousand two hundred fifty dollars higher than they would have otherwise. The cost of that was forty nine thousand dollars or fourteen basis points to the total cost of contract. It's important to just note that these equity adjustments were made because the, both the union and the Board of Ed ultimately agreed that these employees relative to others were played, paid less. And for competitive recruiting reasons, the union and that town did agree to increase that. In most of the contracts we review, the, the pay increases and terms usually apply universally to all members of the union. For general wage increases over the three years, they were all the same at two point three percent per year. There continue to be, there continue to be three steps, step increases and all but seven are at the top step. The average cost of step increases was forty six thousand dollars. The step increment wage cost will increase by seven point five five percent or an average of two point five two percent annually. That's in comparison to the G W I of two point three, meaning that the steps add about twenty two basis points to the cost of contract. Wage and step increases are both lifetime pensionable amounts. The employee share of healthcare premium increased by one and a half percent per year from sixteen and a half percent to eighteen to nineteen and a half and the twenty one respectively. It's important to note that this union is the union town that does pay the highest percent of their healthcare premium. It's also the first union to go over twenty percent. The town agreed to the same vision care package for GOSA that the teachers or the G E A enjoy. The total cost of that over three years was forty three thousand dollars. It's important to note that in the discussions, the initial thought was that cost was going to be significantly lower, but ultimately the cost did come in at forty three thousand or about thirteen basis points. So the healthcare costs net or look, expected increased by about six point five percent annually or nineteen point six three percent over the, over the contract. Basically, the increase in the vision care really offset the increase in healthcare premium. GOSA is a part of the state plan for, for their pensions, so that is include excluded from the cost of contract. With benefit costs, cost of contract increased over the three years by three point oh one percent, two point eight eight and two point seven three for an average of two point nine six percent. It's important to compare that to the three unions that we agreed contracts with last fall. Those three unions, the town nurses, Launa and G M E A had average increases of two point five four percent to two point seven, two percent and two point seven four respectively. So this cost of contract was certainly higher than what we'd achieved and agreed with the other three unions last fall. The L C C was provided with benchmarking information, but that benchmarking information did not include total cost of, and, and total benefits, it was focused on wages and did not include additional benefits. Our employees were the highest paid amongst peer communities and they also have the state healthcare plan. The L C C discussed the contract and the observations were as follows. Before discussing the merits of the contract, the Board of Ed Team and the L C C discussed the process. The L C C felt that more was needed to be done in the future to solicit views and the expertise of the L C C before the negotiations began. Going forward, there seems to be agreement with, between the Board of Ed and the L C C on the following. One is that interactive cost of contract model be built and distributed before the start of negotiations. Again, this is an issue that we're seeing not just with Board of Ed contracts, but it also applies to the town as well. This has been a consistent discussion throughout over the last twelve months. The L C C did appreciate that a member of the L C C, that is a chair, was allowed to attend the negotiations and as an observer, just like the two B E T members, one from the Republican, one from the Democratic Caucus. But again, felt that meeting the entire L C C before would have been helpful. Some, some, I kind of covered that, okay. So the, the Board of Ed had expressed three goals with the contract, one is to reach an agreement without arbitration, which they achieved. Second is to offer wage increases comparable to the marketplace. And third is to increase the employee contribution to healthcare. I think overall, I would say that those objections, I mean, those objectives were met. Certainly, the, the vision care did increase the cost of contract more than expected. And we are still, even with the twenty one percent, we are still lower than other communities that are on the state plan in Fairfield County. One of the reasons why the Board of Ed wanted to avoid arbitration was this is a very small union. This is a union of fifty five people, which means that the arbitration cost of about sixty thousand has to be amortized over fifty five con, individuals instead of a much larger union, which would mean the cost of town for arbitration would be twenty basis points in the cost of contract. And the union, it's, would likewise have to pay about twenty basis points, which means that there was about forty basis points in the contract in terms of incentive not to go to arbitration. That's a reason why this union typically does come to amicable terms with, with the Board of Ed. Obviously, something like the teachers' union with nine hundred employees, the cost of arbitration is a few basis points at the most. So we've seen that get arbitrated more frequently. Okay. As you can, the, let's see, the okay, so the L C C continued with the discussion of, you know, desire for more benchmarking and we ultimately did go to a vote. The L C C did vote to postpone indefinitely, that vote was four to one. We'll see a Jansen and Brooks Harris had other previously scheduled RTM commitments and had to leave the meeting. So we only had five voting members, Mike Spilo voted no to postpone indefinitely because he felt given the, the quality of the benchmarking information, he could not vote to postpone indefinitely. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So you have a motion to amend and then a motion to postpone indefinitely?
Correct.
All right, so let's, let's get our other reports on this.
Oh, really quickly, I mean, you want me to cover the B O C report? I think the material is as mentioned, certainly the B O C had, had a greater concern about the, the benchmarking and the ultimately total cost of, of the benefit packages. The B O C did vote nine to one to postpone indefinitely, District One voted against postponing definitely because they felt the contract should have been rejected because it was too rich. District Four and Eight were absent.
Thank you, thank you. Jennifer Freitag, Vice Chair of our Education Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, your education committee met on Monday, September twentieth via Zoom when we took up item sixteen, which is the GOSA contract. The GOSA contract, GOSA bargaining unit covers fifty five full-time school administrators, including the school principals and assistant principals, program administrators and house heads at Greenwich High School. Peter Bernstein, Chair of the Board of Education, presented this item to us. We also heard from Dan Ozzesmer, Chair of the Labor Contracts Committee, and Michael Mason, the town's labor negotiator. As Dan sort of covered, I'll just summarize really briefly. The main features of this contract are general wage increases of two point three percent per year for three years, step wage increases. step wage increases, seven hundred and fifty dollars per year for three years, and equity pay increases for elementary school principals. Employee health care share of premium increases of one point five percent per year, which will bring us to twenty-one percent in year three, and the addition of vision care package that the town provides for the G E A. In addition, administrators will now be able to elect to work from home on snow days rather than being required to come into the building or use a vacation day. With benefits, the average increased cost of the contract is two point nine six percent per year, and the total cost of the contract over three years is thirty-four point four million dollars. Our committee, similarly to labor contracts, took up two motions. The first was to amend the language of the resolutions that we would be voting to reject the contract rather than to approve the contract. And our second motion was to postpone indefinitely.
Thank you. Michael Basham, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As Secretary of Labor Contracts and Brooks Harris, our Vice Chairman is is Vice Chair of Labor Contracts. We did present the contract for the committee. We'll not recut, we'll not cover all the ground covered by Mr. Oz's mayor. The committee voted twelve zero zero to postpone the contract indefinitely.
Thank you. Before I call for the motion to amend, I I do want to note one thing. Ms. Bernstein thanked the R T M for putting this on as an additional item. In fact, it is we who should be thanking the Board of Ed for arranging this so that we were able to put it on the call of one of our regular meetings. The R T M, as the legislative body of the town, has is given the right by statute to reject agreements, labor contract agreements, be they negotiated or arbitrated, but under a very tight time limit. In some cases, it's thirty days from something happening. Some cases, it's twenty-five days. And so we rely on the town departments that are negotiating these to try and schedule whatever will trigger that statutory time period so that we can put it on a regular meeting. And so I thank the Board of Ed for having done that here. You know, we will always add labor contracts to the agenda of our our regular meeting that saves us having to schedule a special meeting. So thank you for that. And I note that simply because that did not happen, as the members know, with a fire contract, that although we had requested that coordination be made so that we could take it up at our September meeting, that statutory window was triggered in the middle of August and that time period ran out before our September twenty-seven meeting date. We ultimately agreed not to schedule a special meeting, but we don't want to be put in that position. So, you know, the message goes out to our town departments to please try and do what the Board of Ed has done here, coordinate, finalizing that step that triggers a statutory review for us so that we can take these up at our regular meeting. And Mr. Rosen, Oz's mirror, if the Labor Contracts Committee could work along those lines as well. We, you know, we want to minimize waiving our right to review it and certain and minimize any special meetings that might take place. So I just wanted to make that comment. Mr. Roses Mary, first, your motion to amend.
Yes, the L C C voted seven zero to amend the first sentence of the result, the resolved sentence, and we would replace approves with rejects. So it's a resolve that the R T M of the town of Greenwich hereby rejects the agreement between the Board of Ed, et cetera. Thank you.
Do you want to explain the reason for that, Mr. Roses, man?
Yes, okay. Yeah, I know. You may, please.
All right. You know, this is something we have done over the years, and the reason is because it tracks the language in the statute. The statute gives the legislative body, in this case, the R T M, review, but it's very limited. The agreement will take effect automatically unless within the statutory time period, and this is the Teacher Negotiation Act. The legislative body rejects the contract, the agreement. And so we are just complying with the language of the statute. There is no provision in that Teacher Negotiation Act to approve. So thank you for your committee taking care of that business. All right, is there?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Just the Education Committee also had a similar motion, and we approved that motion to amend twelve zero zero.
To change that language from approves to rejects?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Okay. Any, so that is, that is a motion currently before us to amend item sixteen to change approves to reject. Any discussion on that? Any further comments from our committee chairs? Is there any objection to that change? Hearing none, that may be adopted upon unanimous consent. Thank you. Mr. Oz's mirror, whoever, I think a number of your committees have the same motion.
Yes, the L C C voted for one to postpone the item indefinitely, and the purpose of that is that we do not feel we want to affirmatively accept the contract because, you know, we feel again that we are at the high end of the compensation range. And on the other hand, we do not want to go to arbitration, and we want to kind of move on. So that's why we voted for one to approve, I mean, to postpone indefinitely. Thank you.
All right, and that being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second further comments from our committees. Mr. Freitag?
Yes, the educate, thank you. The Education Committee made a similar motion, and our vote was eleven one zero. District eleven voted no because they felt that R T M members should be able to show their approval or disapproval for a contract, which postponing indefinitely does not allow.
Thank you. Anything, Mr. Basham?
No, Mr. Moderator.
All right. So I will now, well, all right. I I do have a sign up. Dean Goss, do you care to, so currently, what is before us is a motion to postpone item sixteen indefinitely? Let me explain what that is. That is a parliamentary device designed to dispose of an item without having the body go on record either for or against it. What it effectively does is flip those who, well, no, no, I'm not going to say that. If a majority, if there's a majority vote in favor of the motion postpone indefinitely, the item is killed, and we would take no further action. If there was a majority no vote on the motion to postpone indefinitely, we would then vote on the resolution as amended tonight to reject it. So that is where we stand. Dean Goss, you have signed up to speak on this item? No? All right, so then we will proceed to take our vote. This is a motion to postpone item sixteen, the ghost contract indefinitely. If you are in favor of disposing of this without taking a vote on the merits, you vote yes. If you want to take this up on the merits and vote on the language of the resolution as amended, you should vote no. All right, so I will ask our district tabulators to please mark their voting cards. L C C, B O C, Education Committee motion to postpone item sixteen indefinitely, and proceed to pull your delegation. All right, thank you. The vote is still in progress. I do have the result of the vote on the easement that is item nine for Cardinal Stadium. Those in favor, one fifty-eight, opposed to abstaining to that item is carried. We are voting on the motion to postpone item sixteen indefinitely now. There was a mention yesterday, last night, of a District eleven sense of the meeting resolution relating to public art on or to art on public property in town. And it was my hope that, you know, I I think everyone knows how I feel about sense of meeting resolutions in general. But in particular, in this setting, where we have a call deadline for our October meeting on Friday of this week, we will be meeting in October. I, you know, I think it's bad process for us to take up items, and all items we vote on are important ones without them having gone through our process of committee review, district discussion. And so, you know, I was trying to recommend to District eleven that they they not bring this up as a sense of the meeting resolution, but put it on the call. We'll take it up in October. No urgency to to rush this through. So, you know, that's my sentiment. Also, this is our second meeting night. Do we this is, does this deserve our, you know, continued spending time? Given all that we've done this month already. So Susan Fahey, Chair of District eleven, with that I call on you. I I note that if we are, if you are going to present it, we first have to, because it's not on our agenda, have to vote by two-thirds vote to consider it. So the floor is yours, Susan Fahey, as to how you want to proceed. You're you're muted. We cannot hear you.
It was a simple somer that we discussed briefly last night, just asking the First Electman's Office to create a written policy and procedure before approving any other of public art in the town. And so if you want, I think it would quickly happen tonight, but I'm happy to put in October. I mean, it's it's half mute because we proved the art last night, but I do think going forward that D eleven feels like there should be a procedure and process so they can say yes and no, and we cited some stuff that the library does for their public places of communication.
All right, so you're not opposed to bringing it in October to us?
I don't think my district would care, but I think it could be easily disposed of quickly tonight. So I will, I don't know. You you can take a quick vote, I guess, and see if you want to do it now, October. I don't care. You have to vote it up or down, right? I mean, you have to vote to take it up or not tonight?
Only if you're presenting it tonight. I'm recommending you don't. If you do, then we'll first take a we'll consider a motion to consider a non-agenda item.
Well, why do you do that? Because maybe I have no idea what October's call looks like, and if it's really busy, they're not going to do it then either. So I mean, I would say, let's take a vote. People want to get rid of this tonight and not do it in October. That's fine. If you want to do it in October, that's fine, too.
How many, how many members do we have tonight here? Hundred and sixty-four. All right, so we'd have a full, we'd have a better attendance in October.
Whatever you want to do, moderator. Sounds like you don't want to do it. It's up to the you.
No, I don't want to do it. I'm asking you if you're going to force the issue. Do you want it? You you may present.
The issue is not nice. I said the body should decide.
That back. I I take that back. I I'm just saying.
Body should decide.
I know you're, I know you're saying it's.
It already ruined my night. We might as well just like get it over with if you're asking.
And I'm saying, and everything we do should be carefully considered.
Okay, I don't think that the case in this situation, but okay, I will. I think you should let, take a two-thirds vote. It'll be there tonight or October. Let's quickly take the vote and make it go up.
So you are moving to take up this non-agenda item?
I think so, because we're already here. Everyone already lost.
Could you read what it is that if they, if we vote by two-thirds vote, what it is they'll be?
Sense of the meeting is that the First Electman's Office should create a written policy for his office to use when approving all art on Greenwich public properties. This policy and process should be in place prior to approving any other public art in the future.
And is there any mechanism for us to get feedback on what that policy is?
There is nothing right now asking for feedback on the policy. We gave them in the, in my notes, I have suggested some of the language that the community of bulletin boards sponsored by the library use around town.
Okay, so now we know. All right. I'm going to take a recorded vote.
Okay.
What should we? This is procedural. So in the first instance, let's, let's see if we can do a raised hand vote.
That's fine.
All right, so District eleven is presenting that non-agenda sense of meeting resolution about first selectmen or the board, I guess, first selectmen, creating some policy about art. If you are in favor of taking that up tonight, please raise your hand now. Thirty-four. All right, and Miss Valderris, could you just keep track of? You got the room? All right, so we have thirty-four remote. Those in the room, raise your hand if you want to take this up tonight. Okay, thank you. All hands down. If you do not want to take this up tonight, please raise your hand now. All right, it's more than that. So so the motion, there are more noes than than yeses, so that motion has failed. All right, so if you put it on the October call, we'll, we'll, the deadline is Friday. We'll take it up. All right, we do have the result of the vote on the motion postpone item sixteen indefinitely. Those in favor, one forty-five abstaining eleven. I'm sorry, opposed eleven abstaining one. That is one forty-five, eleven, one. That most postponed has carried. That disposes of all of the items before us in the September meeting. I thank you all for participating. This meeting stands adjourned.